Okay. Mr. Donahue, we're getting close to seven. I think we need Tom Comita for the Chetty hearing.
Please.
We would have to call him. So we might, we're going to take these out of order tonight. We have the Chetty hearing first and then we will do your liquor license transfer immediately following that, no intermission. Okay, is everybody here for the Chetty plan?
Yep.
Yep?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to call to order a public meeting that was advertised regarding Concord Township's intent to purchase open space. This was duly advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times. And Mr. Donahue, I think I will turn the program over to you at this point.
I got a call.
Sure.
Do you have any opening comments, Hugh?
I'll make some opening comments, but please get Mr. Comita on the phone. So first, I'd like the record to reflect that an ad has appeared in the Daily Times.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Hugh.
With reference to tonight's hearing, and I'd like to make that part of the record, the purpose of this evening's hearing is to receive evidence regarding the acquisition of certain property interests with respect to the Chetty property located at 630 and 668 Featherbed Lane in Garnet Valley. The property interest in question or at issue are twofold. First is the fee simple acquisition of approximately 8.6 acres. The second is the conservation easement, or it's an easement, of 33.2 acres. The fee simple will be held by Concord Township. The conservancy, or the conservation easement, will benefit both the Brandywine Conservancy and Concord Township. However, Brandywine Conservancy will be the entity which manages that conservation easement. For the record, is there any entity or person who is present who is opposing this particular acquisition, be it the fee simple and/or the easement? Let the record reflect, there is none. And is there any, is there counsel here representing any interest opposing this particular acquisition? Let the record reflect, there is none. The next order of business would be, I'd like to move into evidence the following exhibits. Exhibit number one would be ordinance number 283. This was an ordinance that was passed by the Board of Supervisors of Concord Township back in 14th day of July of 2004, which allowed the township to allocate certain millage for the acquisition of open space. It was .189 mils. And that particular ordinance was passed in July of 2004, and it was made part of the township ordinance book and became township law after the referendum election, which was held in November of 2004. Exhibit number two is the Recreation and Open Space Plan Update of Concord Township, which was first prepared March 19th, 2007, revised June 6th, 2007, and it was adopted January 7th of 2008. Exhibit three would be Resolution Number 9 of 2008, which was the resolution that adopted the aforementioned recreational plan. Exhibit four would be the Concord Open Space Map. Exhibit number five would be the Delaware County Planning Department Natural Heritage Inventory, and that's dated June of 2011. Exhibit number six would be the various aerials of the property in question describing both the fee simple acquisition, the conservation easement, and these are exhibits that were prepared by Penoni Associates. Exhibit number seven would be the appraisals for these particular acquisitions. One would be the appraisal for the 33.2 acres, which is the conservation easement. The other would be the appraisal for the 8.6 acres, which we would acquire by fee simple. These appraisals were performed by O'Donnell Appraisal Associates. They were done in February of 2020, and let the record reflect that the O'Donnell Organization and the appraisal that was performed was performed by a certified appraiser. Exhibit number eight would be the Agreement of Sale of Real Estate and Grant of Easement and Declaration of Restrictive Covenants with respect to these properties. Exhibit number nine would be the outline of the easement agreement with respect to these properties. Amanda, as Township Manager, is it your testimony that the exhibits that I have mentioned are certified and true and correct copies of the originals?
Yes, that's correct.
Now, the funds used to purchase these property interests are not general fund monies. It will not require the expenditure of general fund monies. These properties or these interests will be purchased through dedicated open space fund monies, which have been collected and accumulated since January of 2005, and there will be no new taxes required for these acquisitions. The price for the open space lands, for the lands that we will be taking in fee simple for the approximate 8.6 acres, is $450,000. For the 33.2 acres, the conservation easement, the price is $1.3 million. I would like to call now, as the first witness, the Township Engineer Nate Klein. And Nate, would you kindly, and you already have done so, your exhibits are up there. Would you please identify these exhibits and describe what these exhibits represent, where this property is located, and how this property relates to other township properties and interests the township has in those properties? And finally, if you would also speak to the Township Trail System and how that trail system may be adopted or coordinated with this particular purchase?
Should she swear?
She should.
Nathan Klein, C-L-I-N-E, Penoni, P-E-N-N-O-N-I, Township Engineer. And I'll do my best to speak more slowly than usual for our friend Norma here.
I just was concerned, Mr. Gillespie, one of your qualifications, but never mind.
He has those in his back pocket, I'm sure. So I'm going to try and kind of give an overview of the properties, both the easement and the acquired properties. If I am missing anything, I'd just ask Counselor, Mr. Donahue, just to, you know, feel free to ask me some other questions, and I'm happy to fill in the gaps. So the map that we have up here is the open space acquisition and conservation easement that we prepared and had for the announcement a couple of meetings ago. And the parcels in question are in the green and blue at the bottom of the map here. And in short, Mr. Donahue spoke to the acreages, but it's the green colored parcel here will be the conservation easement that will be maintained by the Brandywine Conservancy. The blue piece, which essentially looks like a little flagpole there or a golf club, is the piece that the township will acquire. And what's important here is that the blue piece that we are acquiring is immediately adjacent to the existing township property, Bush Hill Farm, 30 or 40 Bethel Road. Everybody is, I think, intimately familiar with that site. We recently opened some meadow trails on that site. That is the site of a lot of the park and rec activities, as well as two of the dog parks for the township are located there, some nice open farm fields, a beautiful site in the township. So immediately, we're going to be adding this open field on the northwest corner here. Will be immediately added to that. When you're on the site at Bush Hill Farm, you almost assume that's part of the property, but it's not, and it's signed accordingly. So this will be an automatic, just easy addition to this park, and in theory, we'll be able to extend those meadow trails into this part of the site as well. Second, as part of the acquisition, there will be a sliver that's approximately 100 feet wide going out to Featherbed Lane. What we're doing here is, this is a, you know, heavily wooded area, it's also a stream corridor. But the thought process here is going back to kind of the township-wide trail complex. So again, we've got some meadow trails that are local trails here on the Bush Hill Farm site. But long-term planning, based on the township-wide Greenway and Open Space Plan back in 2015, as well as the Garnet Valley Greenway feasibility study that was completed in 2018, contemplates what's called the Garnet Valley Greenway along the Pico Utility Corridor here. This would go in a north-to-south direction along the township, connecting the Octorera Trail, kind of in the north center of the township, to Clayton Park, the county's park there, the large orange park here, and further south into Delaware County. This is a circuit trail on DVR proceeds map, so it's available for significant funding from the county and other regional partners. This feasibility study was completed, but as part of the feasibility study, one of the complications is the intersection of Featherbed Lane and Bethel Road. The intersection is located right here. This is at the intersection on the northeast corner is the recent Township Open Space Acquisition and Preservation of the Hall Site, where the township acquired a large portion of the property and procured a conservation easement on a portion of the property. That intersection there is, there's two culverts, two bridges, pipelines, the Pico easements, private properties, a stream. It's a combination that's very difficult, along with steep slopes on the northeast corner. So by acquiring a 100-foot-long piece of property here, what it does is, and kind of showed by these white dashed lines, is it provides an alternative corridor for the Garnet Valley Greenway. So as this trail proceeds in the future, there will be multiple options to locate this trail. That's critical, especially when we're looking for grant funding, because if we propose a project that we can't facilitate from a right-of-way standpoint or other standpoint, when there alternatives exist, that's looked upon very favorably. This access obviously would get us to Featherbed Lane. The township, I believe, two years ago, acquired what was known as the Neno Parcel on the north side of Featherbed Lane. And again, it's putting together the pieces of the puzzle. This doesn't get us all the way there, but this section is one more piece of that puzzle. And, you know, again, who knows what will come down the line in the future, but at a minimum, gets us out to Featherbed Lane. And again, we'll just keep chipping away at these different alternative access scenarios. The entire site, again, this portion of the site that the township is acquiring is generally a meadow site. The corridor, the 100-foot corridor, is wooded with a pipeline easement. The remaining portion of the site is both a farm and wells as wooded. There's a pond on the bottom of the site. It is part of the Delaware County Natural Heritage Inventory. That was a 2011 report completed by Delaware County to study natural resources throughout the county. There are three different areas throughout Concord Township. This is considered the Clayton Park area, so we are preserving what's called core habitat of that area. That core habitat consists of mature tree stands, other natural vegetation and resources, as well as supporting habitats, the supporting habitats being the perimeter of those core habitats. On this exhibit, it's a little bit hard to see on the screen tonight, but in purple is essentially the border of this core habitat for the Clayton Park area. And again, that's kind of based on, if you've been in that vicinity between Clayton Park and north of Bush Hill Farm, the heavily wooded pieces of ground that are in that area. So by supporting that, again, that kind of meets the request of that 2011 county plan. In addition to our various township planning documents, the open space plan pending as well, sorry, let me back up, the Townshipwide Recreation Open Space Plan, which is being finalized currently, that final report will indicate this Clayton Park region is essentially a hub, where the focus should be on additional preservation and acquisition of open space. So this will be one of the identified hubs of that Recreation Open Space Plan. So while that plan has not been finalized, that report is not finalized, that will be this fall, and before this even happened, because of all these unique things here, Hall, Bush Hill Farm, Clayton Park, Garnet Valley Greenway, this has been kind of determined this will be a focus or a hub of open space preservation and activity. So this will also line up very well with that pending final report that'll be coming out in the next few months. I think that is everything I wanted to touch on, unless I'm missing something that...
I'm sure if you missed something, we're going to ask the counsel, does the counsel have any questions of Mr. Nate Klein concerning his testimony or these exhibits?
Thank you, yes, I do. As anticipated, John Crosson from counsel. Mr. Klein, can you speak? You're currently under developing an update to the Township Open Space Plan, correct?
Correct.
And that, does that plan incorporate this land in that?
Correct. So yeah, as I spoke to at the end, this will be one of the focus hubs of that plan, where we're going to have several hubs throughout the township where, you know, because of what's existing inventory and what's available inventory-wise, will be, should be a focus of the township's next five, 10, 15 years of planning for open space preservation and acquisition.
Hold on, Tom. Stay quiet.
Did we get that, Norma? You good?
No, I don't think he's talking.
Sorry about that. There's a phone here, Tom. I'll say that again. So yes, this will be a part of the township's Recreation Open Space Plan. We have several hubs within the township we are focusing on. This will be a Clayton Park hub because of the existing open space inventory in this area, as well as the opportunities in this area. So this will be a focal point of that document.
Nate, can you speak to the grants that have been applied for and received or pending?
Yes, thank you. I did not mention that, which also reminds me of one other thing. We already have approximately $250,000 from Pennsylvania DCNR, Department of Conservation and Natural Resources. That is a C2P2 grant, which is a community partnership grant, we'll leave it at that. And that $250,000 has already been secured. That will be towards the acquisition portion of the property. We have additionally applied to DCED, the Department of Conservation and Economic Development, for an additional $250,000. That grant has not been announced. That won't get announced until this fall. Additionally, the county has some grant opportunities out there this fall, so we are considering that as an additional opportunity to secure funding possibly for the easement. The county has opened up their grant round, and they are open to the idea of conservation easements, whereas many of the other state funding sources are not. So we will be looking at Delaware County as well for that. Beyond the grants, I did want to mention briefly, the conservation area in green here is, it does include a Class 1 historic resource. It's shown here on the bottom left of the plan, dating back to, I believe, the 1700s. There's a historic house and a historic barn on this site in addition to the, actually, new stone wall that the owners constructed along the front of the property from a kind of a view shed vista standpoint. Anybody that's driven down Featherbed Lane, I'm sure has admired that and seen, you know, the Chetty's working on that for years and years as well. So a beautiful part of the scenery down in that part of the township.
Thank you.
Nate, could you just quickly mention what the conservation agreement means to Concord Township?
Yeah, I'll do my best. The conservation easement's going to be held by a third party, so that'll be handled by the Brandywine Conservancy out of Chad's Ford. The Brandywine Conservancy, I'm sure as many of you know, holds easements and properties throughout the region. They will be responsible party for maintaining that no, any of the restrictions of the easement, such as development of that property, are maintained, as well as the historic nature, you know, the vistas, the site are maintained as is today. I am not privy to every single detail of Mrs. Marone, but there are some restrictions regarding development and things of that nature that are typical to a conservation easement.
But it would mean that that piece of property would stay undisturbed and additional development could not occur on that site?
The conservation easement is in perpetuity. This property cannot be developed with certain exceptions. The property may add another barn, they may add another house structure, and they may add a riding rink for horses. Essentially, that is what it would be allowed in the future, but this could not be developed into housing development, mass track development, or anything of that nature. It will be maintained as a conservation easement with those exceptions in perpetuity.
If an additional house is added, would that be subdivided from this property or it'd have to be maintained within the single property?
I don't believe that an additional house could be built. There is a building area, which is delineated with the yellow dashed line on the exhibit showing, and within that, then the additional outdoor riding rink is able to be built. But no additional residences are to be built, and in fact, it restricts conversion of the barn to a residence or use as a bed and breakfast, which is allowed in our ordinance. However, this easement does restrict that use.
And it does not call for any type of subdivision? Subdivision would not be allowed? Does any member of the audience have any questions of Mr. Klein? Let the record reflect, there are none. Before we proceed, Mr. Klein spoke to an exhibit, and that exhibit was exhibit number six, so the record is clear. And also, would the court reporters kindly swear in Amanda, because she did provide some testimony?
Amanda Serok, S-E-R-O-C-K.
The next witness would be the Township Land Planner, Thomas Comita, with the court reporter. And Thomas is with us via phone. He is on vacation up in the great state of, I believe, Maine, but he's agreed to be with us this evening, and thank you, Tom. And the court reporter's now going to swear you in.
Tom, can you hear us?
I can hear you. I think I just heard Dominic speak, but it was not fully audible.
Okay, you're going to be sworn in by Norma, so hopefully you can hear her.
Okay. Thomas J. Comita, C-O-M-I-T-T-A.
Thank you, Tom. Tom, this is Hugh Donahue. Can you hear me?
I cannot. It's muffled.
Okay.
Tom, why don't you...
Sure. Tom, is that better?
Oh, that's perfect. Thank you.
Got it. Would you please indicate for the record what your role here is in Concord Township?
Sure. So I, Tom Comita, am the President of Thomas Comita Associates Incorporated, Town Planners and Landscape Architects from West Chester, Pennsylvania. And since 1983, my company, Thomas Comita Associates, has served as the planning consultant to Concord Township.
Thank you. Now, Tom, did you assist in drafting the Concord Township Open Space Plan of 2007, 2008?
Yes, I did.
Did that plan identify a procedure for reviewing open space interest and the acquisition thereof? And if it did, would you please describe what was outlined in that open space plan?
The open space plan of 2007, 2008 actually followed initiatives such as the 2000 Comprehensive Plan for Concord Township, which I assisted with, the 2004 Comprehensive Plan Update, and the 1995 Recreation Open Space Plan. In the 2007, 2008 plan, so as not to identify specific parcels and thereby potentially inflate their value in the minds of the owner of the parcels, we came up with a priority scoring system whereby we indicated that if you looked at the various criteria and could achieve seven points, and this is described on pages 13, 14, and 15 of the plan that was adopted January 7, 2008, that if you achieved seven points, you would rise to the level of having a viable candidate property. And so in that arena, and in particular for the hearings tonight pertaining to the Chetty tract at 668 Featherbed Lane, I believe, being the author of that plan, or I'd say the principal author of the plan, that the township would accrue three points based on the suitability of the site, the 33.2 acres, for recreational use, be it passive or active. The township would also accrue two points for having the subject parcel contiguous to existing open space or recreational land. And some years ago, I assisted the township in what was then called the Chestnut Hollow Farm Learning Center, which is immediately to the east of the Chetty property, which I think that Chestnut Hollow property is now called Bush Hill Farm. And that is thereby contiguous, and that's why I believe that two additional points would be accrued for that purpose. And then an additional two points would be accrued for facilities that have a trail link. And Mr. Donahue, have exhibits been marked for the purposes of the hearing?
Yes, they have.
Yeah, in exhibit number six for the hearing, which highlights the location of the 33.2 acre subject Chetty property and adjoining 8.6 acre property in the Bush Hill Farm, a dash line is also depicted illustrating a trail link, which eventually could go to Clayton Park.
That is correct, and Mr. Klein has already outlined that for counsel and the audience.
Very good. So the overall rationale, I believe, for the favorable action by Concord Township Council to acquire the Chetty tract is to fulfill a recreational need for a growing community. And when I say growing community, that's evidenced by the Comprehensive Plan of 2000 and 2004, as well as the open space plans of 1995 and 2008, all of which had population projections and an indication of a growing need for recreational land. Second, I mentioned the contiguity and adjacency of the subject parcel, especially to the east. And then, third, the trail link. So it's a perfect site that fulfills three of the most significant criteria the council is supposed to consider when making a decision about land acquisition.
Thank you, Tom. So would it be fair to say that the resolution which adopted the amendment to the Open Space Plan and Recreation Plan of 2007 and 2008 established a procedure for reviewing open space acquisition interest and also established a rating system, rating the desirability of particular parcels? Is that correct?
Yes.
And that procedure has been followed, has it not, with reference to these acquisitions?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I have. Does counsel have any questions of this particular witness? Does anyone from the audience have any questions of Mr. Comita? Thomas, thank you, and go enjoy that cool weather in Maine, because we're all jealous down here.
Yeah, I have worn a sweatshirt and a windbreaker right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good.
Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
And as our next witness, I'd like to call John Crosson. John, as you all know, is a counsel person who's represented Concord Township. He's also a former member of the Open Space Committee. And John, would you please describe why you and other members of councils believe...
Do you need to swear a minute?
We will? Hold on. Believe that this particular property should be protected and interest should be acquired for both the conservation easement and in fee simple. And before you answer that question, we're going to have the court reporter swear you in.
John Crosson, C-R-O-S-S-A-N. Thank you, Mr. Donahue. Yes, I joined the, I was appointed to the Concord Township Open Space Committee in July of 2016, and even at that time, it was noted... of 2016, and even at that time, it was noted through the work of that committee that this was a property of targeted interest, and that the committee and the council, and prior to that, the Board of Supervisors had been interested in for some time. When I joined council in, I'm trying to remember when I joined council, 2018, January 2018, I began to be engaged in discussions, confidential discussions, between the Chetty's, their attorney, as well as the Brandywine Conservancy, who they had engaged and wished to participate in this process. So it was a process. So this is, this is without a doubt, I believe, probably the longest, this property has the longest history of preservation focus.
And I will attest to that.
It is also one of the most significant properties remaining in Concord Township. There, it is an active working farm of significant acreage. We have a handful of these in Concord Township, and the Chetty's have owned this property, Leon and Bernice's Chetty have owned this property since 1966, and it has had just a handful of owners since the land grant by William Penn. So it is significant, not only for its ecological value, but, and the historic structures that are in place, but also how it fits into the historic fabric of the community for several This, as Nate noted, this property is cited as one of three properties within Concord Township in the Delaware County Natural Heritage Inventory, and is part of the Clayton Park-Shaver Town Woods area of significance. I will note from the report that it says roughly half of this area is owned by the county, and the township has public parks and open space. The remainder is owned by numerous landowners, some with larger parcels than others, and fragmentation of ownership can make coordinated conservation actions more difficult, but not impossible to achieve. Through this acquisition, we are securing a significant majority of this, of this area for preservation and conservation, and thereby achieving the goals stated by, identified by the county and the Natural Heritage Inventory. Of particular note is that there are eight species of concern, all plant species, some of which have not been seen since 1991 on this property, and one is a sensitive species of concern, which is not named. This property is noted as being of high significance, which is the second highest level of property notation in the inventory. Nate noted that it contains historical properties as well. The house dates back to 1776, and the barn to 1830. Let's see, I will note that there is a small cottage on Featherbed Road, in the upper corner of this property, and as part of this acquisition, that cottage will be demolished so as to eliminate that particular dwelling from the site and provide for the smooth access in the corridor that the township is purchasing. And a fence will be installed along that, the edge of the property between what will be, the township will be purchasing and what will be in conservation easement. The, let's see, I'm not sure else I want to say. I'm extremely excited to be able to preserve this property and for council to have the opportunity to take action on this property. It is extremely significant in many ways, from an ecological perspective, from a viewshed perspective, from a historical perspective, from a trail and active recreation perspective, to the residents and citizens of this township and to the environment.
John, thank you. And John, pursuant to township policy and procedure and the second-class Township Code, how did the township determine an equitable price for these acquisitions in fee simple and with respect to the conservation easement?
The township engaged Brian O'Donnell and Associates to conduct an appraisal on these lands, both the fee simple property acquisition as well as the conservation easement, and we requested that he do so according to the DCNR guidelines, so that we were able to apply for grants.
And Mr. O'Donnell's company and the person who performed this particular appraisal, they're certified appraisers, are they not?
That's correct.
And in fact, it's the policy and procedure of Concord Township to have any and all property appraised before there is a open space acquisition.
That is correct. We do not pay any more than in the appraised value.
Does anyone have any testimony? Anyone in the audience have any testimony to present opposing this acquisition or suggest that these acquisitions are not in the best interest of the township? Let the record reflect, there's no testimony in that regard. Does anyone else have any other comment they would like to make regarding this particular There is none. At this point, I would ask Amanda, the Township Manager, to provide the court reporter with the packet of exhibits, and I would ask, and I'm going to move all the exhibits, one through, I believe, nine, into evidence. I thank you all, and I would ask that we close the hearing, and is there a motion in that regard?
Do we have a motion to close this hearing? We have a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. That closes that one, Norma. We're going to roll right in.